That we have been a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Don.
I have in my hand. A book that's near and dear to my heart. Was given to me. Not by a veteran. But by someone. Who has had the care, concern, housing, feeding, and comforting of veterans. As her goal. And as her avocation and her mission in life. For longer than I can remember. Let's Sharon Giraffano Russell. And it's a difficult time. For we, for us veterans. Who served in foreign countries in wartime. Because no matter how many years you live. The operative word is that you are living. And every year at this time, all I can think of really. Are those with whom I served. Who aren't living. And who gave the most. That's why this means so much to me. So thank you, Sharon. And thank you for just allowing me a little bit of emotion here before we start our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And thank you for your service.
You're welcome. It's good to be home.
Yeah. All right, we will go on. See, I will note that present are select board members. Don Chaffee, Sharon Russell, and Mary Ashcroft in person. On the phone, Joe Donardo. On the phone, John Paul Fagnon. So we have a full quota of select board members. Um, okay, order approval of the orders. Um, I think the three of us have already signed and left them here and they will be available for JP and Joe in the town clerk's office. Um, approval of the select board minutes for October 26. So move. Motions made and seconded Sharon and JP to approve the minutes of the October 26 meeting. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, you have approved the minutes. Because I signed the one that I've got, right Bill? Okay. Right, um, a couple of housekeeping things. We will have Ed Carr from the mall calling in at 6:30. Um, we have out of order, well, people, what we usually do at this point is to ask if folks are present who are not otherwise on the agenda. Uh, and wish to comment. I think most folks are here because you're on the agenda somewhere, right? So this young man who said back and forth.
I'm with Mike.
You're with Mike. Okay, very good. Chris, anything?
Oh, hold on.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. So we've done the minutes. We have present with us tonight. Randall Smathers and Barry Cohen from the Rutland Free Library. Um, that's item B under new business. We have received some handouts. Um, just, you know, for in in two weeks, we will hear from Lyle Jepson of the Chamber of Commerce, or what Cedar is called now. So we are now beginning to get requests in of people who wish to talk to the select board. So we'll start with Randall and Barry to discuss the library. If you come up here, you can be on camera. And I think the um, audio is a little better, too.
Thank you. Um, I did bring duplicates of the handout in case anybody would prefer print to the version I sent electronically. And I also made spare copies. So anybody else who's in attendance who would like to um, get this information can get it. Um, just want to talk a little bit about the where we stand with the library. Um, today. It's been, of course, a challenging year, but we are in very good shape. Uh, we've come through it. Um, I won't say unscathed. But, um, uh, hopefully we're through the worst of it. Um, our usage is starting to bounce back up. And we are very bullish. Uh, I also have a couple of pieces of kind of breaking news. Uh, I was just at the Rutland City Rec Committee meeting. And our budget request of 2% increase uh, has passed the committee stage. Uh, it does need to go through the um a full board, the the full Board of Aldermen at the city. Um, and uh, we are expecting it to pass. Uh, so we would be coming to the the town with 2% increase request as well. And uh, just a reminder, last year, uh, although the city was uh, looking for a 2% increase. Uh, the library voluntarily came in at a flatline budget. Because we were concerned about the ability of our sending towns to absorb an increase last year. So um, the upshot is we are going to be substantially below inflation. We are this year and we expect to be in FY '23 as well. But we will figure out how to do that. Um, the next thing I would like to do is welcome you, um, or introduce you to Joe Bertoloni, who is the new Rutland Town Rep on our um, Board of Trustees. According to the association bylaws that we operate under, two members of that um, board are always from Rutland Town. And uh, so uh, Joe provided me with this uh, quick bio. He moved to Rutland, he originally from Northern New Jersey. He moved to Rutland in 2012, to Rutland Town. Uh, he's been an educator for 17 years. And currently serves as the school librarian for Clarendon Elementary and Tinmouth Mountain Schools. Uh, that's the Mill River District. Uh, he received his librarian training from the University of Vermont and was a member of the 2019 American Library Association Emerging Leaders Cohort. Which is a very high honor within the library community and is an active member of the Vermont School Library Association. I've had the pleasure of working with Joe, uh, Tinmouth being one of our towns. That we serve. Uh, so I've had the pleasure of working with Joe in that um, respect a couple of times and I'm I'm really impressed and excited to have him. I think you'll find he's an excellent representative for Rutland Town on our board.
And he is replacing?
He is replacing Anita Dutch, who is retired after six years of service.
Right.
Um, it is a three-year um term and then typically a three-year um, renewal and six years is the maximum. Your term limited at six years.
And our other rep is Eddie Orgerzalik?
Yes, and unfortunately Ed can't be with us because um, of COVID concerns. He's uh, he's not able to come into public meetings like this. Um, Joe does send his apologies. But he has family commitments tonight. He has small children, so. Barry and I.
Randall, how how were the board members selected? I didn't.
Um, the the board members are selected by the Rutland Free Library Association, which is the 501(c)(3) that we operate under. It's, that's the official organization that reports to, for instance, the IRS and and the state of Vermont. Um, we have an annual meeting every year, which is warned. And then it's by vote of the members of that association. Um, that typically is in October. It has to be within four months of the end of the fiscal year, which for us is end of June.
Now, you see, you learn something every day of the year, if you're smart. Well, I always thought that the chairman of the board wanted our members for their terms.
There is, there is one appointment on our board, uh, according to the bylaws, and that is the mayor of the city gets to appoint one member. Uh, what typically happens is we call him up and we say, we'd like you to appoint this person because uh, filling seats is difficult. And it's a working board. It's not a, it's not a rubber stamp board. Barry can attest to that. So it's, it's a lot of hours and recruiting for the board is actually fairly complicated. It's, it's hard. Mary can attest to this as you were not only a board member, you were president, if I'm correct.
I was president and I think I was an at-large member.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a 15-person board. And um, yeah, so it's a great board. It's, it's great to work with and I think you'll enjoy, Joe, like I said. I'd like to go over the the nice colored handout, if I may. I did provide some more data on the uh, on the other sheet, but I just kind of like to run over this. Because Rutland Town and Mendon among our communities receive far and away the best value for their dollars, for their tax dollars that they submit uh, yearly, and we appreciate the support. And so I just kind of want to talk a little bit about that. What you'll see is I've drawn up three of the libraries that are closest in terms of spending. Uh, that's the top three, Brandon, Johnson, and McClure. And then three of the libraries that are closest, these three libraries that are closest in terms of population. This is all drawn from the uh, State Department of Library Statistics, which is the bottom line on the printed sheet. Um, so I'll just run through it quickly. Where it says Rutland Town, I I created a fictional Rutland Town. Um, so you could see if you were trying to run a library by yourself instead of using the city library, where you'd stand. Uh, obviously, the square footage, you're unlikely to have a building of 24,000 square feet. Um, you're unlikely to have 467 staff, uh, staff hours, rather. Local tax, the town pays $94,782, or did in 2020 and 2021, because we level funded our budget. So you'll see that it's on the low end, um, in terms of other towns certainly of similar size, it's far lower. And um the local tax per capita, let's call them I. Um, is again, it's not the lowest, but it's on the very low end. Brandon's um, numbers, by the way, are skewed somewhat because Brandon Library actually rents out a couple of apartments. And that helps hold down their local tax. Uh, but then column J, it's the first one I've got uh, highlighted of the data columns. Uh, it sort of is a summary uh, from the state website that sums up what the the local share of um, income is. And as you can see, if Rutland Town was operating outside of Rutland Free Library, it would be about $143,000 instead of 95. Uh, 94 and change. And that doesn't include the Nellie Grimm Fox Fund. Uh, which is item three, the same column, but at the bottom. The Fox Fund is 15.2 million dollars right now. Uh, it is money that we cannot touch. We cannot spend a penny of the principal. It is the interest is shared evenly between us, Grace Congregational Church, and the hospital. And that's according to Nellie Grimm Fox as well. But it was a very generous gift when it was made in 1969 and the stock market has treated it well over the decades. Uh, and so it is worth 15.3 million dollars, of which we expect to get about $195,000 um, in the upcoming year. So the next line, item K, total collection expenditures. This shows what a a community the size of Rutland Town would expect to uh, spend in terms of uh, collection. It's important to note that Rutland Town actually spends $0 for the collection because the entire collection comes out of the Nellie Grimm Fox Fund. So this is a benefit that accrues to all our towns, not just Rutland Town. Um, but it is substantial. And then um, this is one area where our spending does stand out compared to all the other comparables except of course Manchester, because Manchester is um, a very well-to-do town. Uh, but we spend significantly more per capita than most comparable libraries and that's because, or on on our collection. And that's because of the Fox Fund. We think it's important to not just have that sitting in an investment account somewhere, but to be trying to use it um, for residents. And this does tie into one note um, from the other sheet that a lot of our expenditures on downloadables, so that would be audiobooks, ebooks, things like that, streaming video. Those costs are increasing far faster than the rest of our costs. Because publishers treat a downloaded book as if it was a print copy and after it's been used 16 times, after it's been borrowed 16 times, they take it back. And they charge us an extra fee for the use of that book. Uh, because it's an electronic version. You have no idea why, because of course you have no publishing costs, no paper and ink. Uh, but that's just how the publishing industry works. That's important, I think, for Rutland Town users, because you no longer have to drive to the library to borrow our books. And this year, uh, 20% of our borrowing was virtual borrowing. People were downloading things from our website. So it's an important service that we provide. It's very expensive even compared to regular print. Uh, and it's one that town residents can enjoy to the same extent as anybody else who has a library card with us. Back to the the chart. Total collection. If Rutland Town was to to have a library of its own. Its share of the collection to be as large as ours would be 18,000, almost 18,500 items. The average cost of a print book this year is $34. And uh, at the $19,000, almost $20,000 per year spending. It would take roughly 32 years for a a library starting up to amass a collection of 19,000 items. Uh, it's a long process. It requires consistent support. Years when we don't get support uh, cause all manner of problems for us. Uh, O is total registered borrowers. The note on that, note seven. You'll note that the bar, our estimated borrower numbers for Rutland Town are well within the range of similarly similarly sized libraries. Uh, it is an estimate. Um, you can see from the chart, column R, uh, that some of the other libraries also estimate. Uh, estimate, rather, Richmond Free and Johnson both, uh, sorry, uh, Richmond Free and McClure both estimate everything. We do actual counts of borrowers, but in order to split out Rutland Town from Rutland City. We estimate that. It's very difficult to control that. I was just on the state website looking at COVID numbers and I noted that they had 35 COVID cases in Rutland Town. And over 1,100 in the city. And that's of course because uh, most folks go to the hospital in the city for COVID treatment. Similarly, it's, it's it's hard for us to divide out, uh, virtually impossible for us to divide out to 100% accuracy, the number of users from Rutland Town. I would point out that the easiest way to estimate this would be to simply divide the number of Rutland Town viewer users from uh, the total sorry, Rutland Town population, from the total population uh, covered by the library. If we did it that way, the estimate would be over 2,000 users. We think that's high. Um, we don't want to give you an inflated estimate. We we want it to be as accurate as possible. So we went in and pulled out everybody that we're we're confident, uh, we have their address, sorted them out. Redid the the calculation and it came out at 1,419. If anything, that's probably a little bit low. It's probably a little conservative. But it's close. Uh, I would guess probably within a dozen or so users. And if you look at the ratio of borrowers, this is column P, the ratio of borrowers to population. It's uh, 35% of the population uh, in Rutland Town. That would be the second lowest total of any of the communities on this chart. Uh, the highest is Manchester. Um, they have a gorgeous new library and they paid a lot of money for it. But they're over 70% of their population has a library card, an active one. Most of the libraries for communities of this size come in at about 50%. So at 35%, we think we're probably conservative. It's very close. Annual visits, by the way, this is a COVID year, uh, so it shows 76,915 visits. Uh, our last pre-COVID year, it was over 118,000 visits. We're heavily used and that is people walking through the door. That doesn't count people borrowing items from our website. And like I said, that was 20% of our usership this past year. Again, that's a result of COVID. We're expecting those numbers to drop a little bit uh, as people can come into the library. We were not closed any days this fiscal year because of COVID. That makes us one of the very few libraries in the state that was not. We were closed for six weeks in the last fiscal year. We reopened the second day after the governor said that libraries were allowed to. We were the second in the state after Queechee. Um, we took the first day for a staff training day to make sure everybody knew what was expected of them. So we are we're proud of the work we do for the the town. And we think we provide good value. And then one last point. On this sheet, I'll note, I I do know the fifth paragraph. Rutland Town also gains the benefit of not having to provide a building, nor pay the full cost of maintaining one. Uh, our building maintenance cost for the upcoming year is $76,000. That covers electricity, heat, and small repairs. Uh, I'm wearing a sweater. Because today is the first day we had heat in the library this year. Both of our boilers died. We have been operating without any heat at all. Um, until today. The cost of that, that the city is paying 100% of. The estimate is $92,500. Which is roughly what the town pays in a full year um, for property taxes toward our, towards the library.
So I'm gonna, because we do have, you know, other stuff.
By all means.
Any select board members have any questions or comments? I think Don might, but uh, Joe?
No, I'm all set. Thanks, Mary.
Okay, JP?
I'm all set, Mary. Thanks.
Don?
Yeah, I um I don't mean to harp on this, Randall, but we've we've talked about this before and you've explained this evening. First of all, I I I support having a library of that caliber for Rutland Townspeople. I always have. My concern is, I have two concerns. Uh, and and they don't just apply to you, to the Rutland Free Library. They are applied generally to items that we put after the budget as separate items, like the regional ambulance service and all those other extras that people typically do vote for. It's very seldom that they don't vote for those extra items on there unless there's some real big controversy of some sort. When, when those items approach the level and the amount that that the Rutland Free Library is approaching right now, which is pretty close to $100,000. And it becomes, which is about 1% of our municipal budget. That becomes substantial enough that as a board member. I wonder whether we should be putting this as a budget item and discussing it as a budget item as part of a town operation, since that's what you're, you are basically considering it as a town operation because well, you've calculated it based on our our population on a per capita basis. So it's, it's the whole town that's participating in this, the way it's set up right now.
Yep.
That being the case, we should be, maybe we should be treating it as a budget item. So that, and that's my concern, not only with with your estimate, but with others as well, as they approach that kind of money. I I just think there there's a better way in terms of uh, what do I want to call it? Fiscal responsibility that we have to scrutinize a budget item.
Well, and and
that's one, that's one. And the second one is uh, I, and and if you could help me understand when when someone would come into your facility. Say a new person in the region. And they would say, I would like to join the, you know, I would like uh, I'd like to join as a member. You have to make a determination whether you're going to charge them the open rate, or whether you're going to charge that, or whether you're going to include them as part of a member district.
Right.
How do you do that?
So I'll answer the first question first. It it is the town's uh, option to either treat us as a warrant article or as part of the budget. Uh, Rutland City, Mendon, and Tinmouth, we are included in the overall community budget. Uh, we are traditionally a warrant article item in the town and in IRA. So it's a, it's, as with most things with a five-town consortium, it is, it is a mixed bag. Um, as far as um how we verify that you um, are from one of our towns is we ask for two pieces of ID. One of them has to be a photo ID from wherever, you know, can be a driver's license from anywhere, that kind of thing. And the other is um, proof that you live in one of our five towns. Um, often that's a piece of mail that's been delivered. If there's a question, we simply mail the library card to the address that the person gives us. Um, if it doesn't, if it comes back undeliverable, we know there was a problem with the address. What we don't do is we don't then typically what we have not done is go into any detail and and have them prove if they live in the town or the city, which is why there's which is why we estimate town usership versus city usership. We don't want it to be a bureaucratic hassle for somebody to apply for a library card.
No, that's, I understand.
So so they they proved that they come from one of our sending towns. At that point, from the library standpoint, we have the information we need. You, whether you're from the town, city, Menon, Timoth, or IRA, you have the right to our services at no extra charge because your community pays taxes to support us.
Now, do you, do you, do you code? Do you code their card with any kind of an identifier that identifies them in as a Rutland Town if they say? I mean, if, when people, I mean, when people move to a community and somebody comes into your, to your to your building and and asks to be a member. I would think you would say, well, you know, where do you, where do you live? What's your address? Where do you live?
Right.
Well, I live in Tinmouth and this is my address on the road. I don't, I wouldn't think that anyone would have a problem. Or if anyone did, it would be a miniscule amount of people that would have a problem telling you which town they lived in. I mean, it's that's not a piece of sacrosanct information.
I I think if somebody bought a piece of property. I I would guess that probably 99% of the people who buy a a new piece of property know where they're going to be living. Many of our users don't. And um, in response to your question um, early in the year about, you know, being able to provide exact numbers, I went back and looked at some of the data and it's not very accurate. A lot of people come in and honestly, I think some folks think it's a trick question. They know that they're standing in the city and so you say Rutland City or Rutland Town and they go, uh, city. Because they want a library card. And they don't really understand and we don't want to stop and and take their time to say, well, if you're in the town, you can also get a card. So the error rate that people report is much higher than the um, than the error rate from this estimate. And cleaning that data up would be troublesome, problematic. I have asked my staff to work on it. So what we did is we identified addresses, streets that that have the same name in the city and the town. Because we would like to give you a better answer. We would like to give you a more precise estimate or ultimately somewhere down the road, an exact count. We can't do that right now. Mary's been by. She's seen the clipboard we have behind the circ desk with the map on it.
And you know, I will say, my mailing address is North Clarendon, so they have every reason to be suspicious of me. Because I don't have well, I know, for many reasons.
You know, it's, well, that's a problem, Randall, is that we have five zip codes in the town of Rutland, but the, my point. My point to you is that from a, from a fiscal responsibility point of view, there's only really one way. We have a very simple way that we could ascertain, and that is if you send us a list of the people that you think are Rutland Town residents. The, our, our staff can verify that very, very quickly because we have voter rolls and we have, you know, we have lists. So we could, we could help you in that regard. But I just, I I'm I don't, I don't mean to be fixated on this, but I think, I think it would be I don't think, I know, it would be more beneficial to you and to us to know pretty much exactly how many Rutland Town residents are members of of the Library Association. And I, and I've questioned that and you know, you know that I've questioned that and I don't mean to, I don't mean to say that you're lying to us because that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is this is the modern day and age, and if we can't figure out where somebody lives and tell this town, how many people, how many members we have, then it's uh, there's something wrong because you have computers. And I asked you, do you code it at all? Because I've talked to town residents that have a two in front of their name.
Reminder, we're at 6:30 and we've got another Zoom meeting scheduled or a call.
So so just really quickly, the most important response is we would share the data information, the data with you about our users, except that's against the state law.
But what?
The state law. There's Vermont Law of Libraries has a section on uh, and I'm sorry, I forget the exact VSA. It has a section on patron privacy. Uh, and I'm sorry, I forget the exact VSA. It has a section on patron privacy. We are not allowed to share that information. We can't even share it with our fundraising committee. It is, it is strictly for the purpose of, do you have the right to take a book out of this library? It's freedom to read. It's First Amendment. It is, it is absolutely core to what we do as libraries. Um, we literally could not share that with you. Regardless if we wanted to or not.
Okay, to finish up. Because I have, and I, and I was, um. I was very open and transparent with Mary when I told her and when I told the board. That I had planned to introduce a, a, a measure. Where, where, where only those members that, uh, that paid, that, that have a library card got reimbursed at the rate. And obviously. If your numbers are. If your numbers are incorrect. That's not going to be beneficial to you. And I, and I understand that because that would change the funding structure significantly, I think. But if that's the only way. That we can ascertain. How many users there are. That wish to be reimbursed for their library card. And. And, and the voters. Approve of this method if they have the opportunity. My. My goal and, and, and my whole impetus in being on this board is to represent the people of the town, and I believe that they should have. Uh, enough of an input in this thing that it shouldn't be us unless we take it over, as I said, and make it part of a budget. Because then we would be determining what percentage increase you got. Rather than just reacting to yours. And obviously you would have input to that process, just like all our other department heads do.
Sure.
But it would be the board that decided whether we were going to flat rate or whether we were going to increase it, whatever. Because we have a. As you well aware. This is a very, very difficult year. On the citizenry in every town, including our own town in terms of inflation. And every other thing that's going up by. Astronomical amounts. We're talking forty and fifty percent increases and things, so.
Okay, so.
Anyways, that, that's.
It's a relief to know that you're asking for a two percent increase, so.
After a flatline budget.
After flatlands. So, um, with apologies, I'm sure this can, this debate will probably go on, you know, at.
No, and thank you for your candidness this evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
I did, um, if, if there's folks who are watching this, uh, at home and they'd like to see copies of this, I brought in lots that I will leave. So folks can get it at the Rutland Town Office.
Okay.
Thanks very much, everybody.
Good to see you. We are, uh. Now a little beyond six thirty, but, uh, we have on the line Ed Carr, who is the. Security consultant with Diamond Run Mall. Um, we have Steve Wolf, who is with Spartan Arena, Castleton University. And I think this, did I miss anybody who was, um, on the line for this? I think we're looking for. An update about where we are. Uh, maybe Mr. Carr can address some, um, how we're doing on the security measures. Um, that we had discussed and the possibility of closing and, and the response, the responses by a, um, law enforcement agency. And the possible closure. Of a portion of the roadway leading into the mall. So I'll toss all of those things and welcome Mr. Carr. Good to see you again.
Good to see you guys. Thank you. Um. I'm not a security consultant. I wish, sometimes I wish I was, but now, you know, more I think about it, I probably am glad I'm not. Sorry I missed, uh, the last meeting. I think you're gonna like this one. I think I would have rather been with you than where I was. Well, which was in the cold rain and a Halloween parade for Johnstown. I got roped into that without my knowledge, but anyway.
Well, thank you for giving to your community.
Uh, well, yeah, sometimes you don't think you can give enough, but, um, it was, hey, it was worthwhile. Um, I wanted to start first with, um. Probably our, our good news is that. Our security system went live last week. And, um, I, 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 I don't know that we want to discuss the details in public because we don't want everybody to know what. We have in play. But I'd like to share with you our first event. Last night. Proving that the system that we have in there worked to, to our design. Last evening. Two juveniles were spotted inside the mall. They were caught by security, by our security company. And the state police then came and issued trespass notices to these two. Probably giving them the surprise of their life that we were actually keeping an eye on the place. That's exactly what we had intended, that if anybody got in the mall, we'd get them. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I wanted to share that. It's a success, although we'd rather nobody be in there. Uh, the system that we put in last week, uh, it finally went live, worked. Can I answer any general questions on that? And how that's working?
Yeah, the, the biggest question I have is that now that you've been successful. Can that information be released to the press so that it can be put out there so that other people will know? That the jig is up? I mean dissemination of it is what's going to stop this thing from happening so that you don't have to find all of them. Originally, they can, they can get the message to them.
I, um, I agree with you. I think a couple of things will happen. Um, and, and please let me know if, if I'm overstating it. Word of mouth is going to get around real quick. Um, especially like in the case of the juveniles. They're not gonna, other buddies aren't gonna be able to get up there. Um, I think by discussing this with you. Um, and the agenda and sometimes it hits a newspaper that that word will get out. Without us, uh, and, and I may be exaggerating, um, in response to your concern. I don't think we want to take an ad out in the paper. Saying the jig is up, and, and, and I know that's not what you meant. I don't know an easy way to do that, but I really think. That, um, the word will get out and get out really quickly. I can't, I don't remember the last time if we talked, I told, we had. Put, um, no trespassing signs up all around the, um, the building. Um, that was partially in suggestion to the chief Dumas's. In response to his suggestion. So nobody can say that they weren't warned, that they weren't allowed in there.
Okay, so you have posted no trespassing signs?
On the building, yes. I think we have. Twenty-four of them. All around, uh, every, um, major entrance that somebody, that we've had. Um, experience with that somebody has gotten in there.
Well, let me ask the chief, our chief of police. If he feels it would be appropriate, because you, you put out press releases on. Uh, from, from the RTPD. On Facebook. At least to put one out that says an apprehension has been made and whatever, would that be?
If that can be done, I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean, they were juveniles. Um, I'm sure the state police have the incident report with their names on it. We don't want to do that.
No, no.
I don't think we need to do that, but that's a good idea. So somewhere between Chief Dumas and, and Bill Sweet, our town administrator, can we get something out there on the town's website?
We can.
Okay.
Oh, great. Thank you. That'd be a good help. That, I really think that'd be a good help and it was a good suggestion. It's just, we, we kind of don't want to tell everybody where things are at and going on because then they'll be targeted. Okay, but I thought the other success was that the response. Was as we discussed the last time we together, what's our plan? To try not to, um, burden, um, the town of Rutland Police. Um, to use the security company first and then the state police. And, and that's what happened last night.
Okay.
Okay.
This is Chief Dumas for you, Mr. Carr.
Okay, hey, chief.
And why don't you come up here so he can see you?
You would, uh, I, if you don't want to burden the state police, yours, the local security guys can issue, uh, trespass notices like anybody else.
Okay.
Uh, that way they're, you won't have to burden the state police or us, as long as you can, you can email the copy of the. Trespass notices to me and I can forward them to the state police or wherever, so we have a copy of them. If they violate the trespass notice, then we can go ahead and do what we have to do after that.
Okay, um, when I get those reports, I will, um, share them with you directly. How's that?
That sounds good.
Okay, again, I don't want to, I'm trying to honor our commitment that we don't want to burden you guys.
No, I get that.
I appreciate your help.
A small burden. We're not going up in the middle of the night trying to. Chase people around the side of the mall. If you have a cer- security company, they can issue the trespass notices just like we can.
Okay.
You can use the state police one that they have or we have them, or you can, you can make one of your own, just stay off their property there and.
Okay, um, being that that happened last night, I don't have those reports yet, so I can't physically tell you what they look like. Okay, or what, what they're involved, but I appreciate your input on that.
I'll forward you a copy of our trespass notices and if.
Okay.
I got a copy of the state police one, I'll forward you that and you guys can make up your own. Uh, with the language and you should be good to go.
I think when, um, the, uh, security company, uh, in. Found individuals in the property, they immediately called the state police. Okay, because they were trespassing, obviously. Okay? Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
Okay, um, so two other questions. One, um, Steve Wolf is, is with us and. Um, he had raised some concerns about lack of lighting. Patrons who are going up to Spartan Arena to watch the first hockey game. So where are we with that?
I want to make sure I have my timing correct. Last week we had a local electrician whom you all know, I think. At the mall, he got some of the lighting active up on the, um, north end of the parking area. Um, he's coming, I just spoke with him again today. The next plan is to try to get. The lights on from the highway up to the Spartan Arena. Okay, there, it worked. Me and the electrician are kind of learning by experience. It's not. Straightforward, at least I thought it should be. Um, he's having, he's basically has to investigate and try things to see what comes on and what goes off. He had in about, I think, one afternoon, some success with getting, uh, a bank of lights on. Um, we talked today and I told him the next thing I needed him to focus on was getting those, trying to get lights or identify which circuits. Will enable lights from the highway up to the arena. Okay?
North, is this the north entrance or the south?
The north entrance.
Okay. Now Steve is nodding, so.
So Steve and, um, hey Steve, Steve and Michael have been talking, right Steve?
We have been talking, yes.
Okay, and I think he might, um, did he send you something today?
I didn't see anything today, no.
Okay, uh, we reached out to our electrician. I think you know who it is. And, and I talked with him today at length and gave him the next direction of what we need to do.
Right, and coming up from Route seven to the top of the hill and that's, that's one area. Then the other area for us would be the Kmart parking lot. At least a section of that because that's, that is still pitch dark there, you know.
Okay.
It, it's, it's good that it goes from the top of the hill all the way to the arena. With one main light being out, hopefully that can get fixed. We've talked about that, but. Uh, that, that area in front of Kmart, you know, if there was some lighting there, that would help a lot.
Okay, I'll, I'll note that to, um, the electrician. Obviously what we're trying to do is get as much on up there as we can. Um, so if he finds a circuit. That if he throws the on button, five of the eight lights come on, that's good. We'll get to those other three, but let's get at least. My, my approach is let's get what we can done as quickly as we can.
And it did help a lot for the weekend.
Yeah, oh, I, I, believe me, I, I was up there at night and it is awful dark. Okay.
Okay, um, see on the, uh, on the call are John Paul Fagin, JP, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm all set. Thanks, Mary.
Okay, Joe DiNardo.
Uh, just one, you know, um, I know we've talked about the, uh, possibility of closing off some of the driveways and. Limiting accesses. Would that north driveway be the one that we would like to see left open and the one right off of Route seven? Um, at the traffic light closed and is there any thoughts that that's going to ever happen?
Um, it's still an option on the table. The one price we got. Looked to be a little high. If anybody knows anybody that's selling, um. Concrete barriers, used ones, I'd appreciate some input on that. But at the same time, we realized that. Those concrete barriers are not going to stop foot traffic. And we wanted to get the foot traffic under control with the measures that we took up at the, uh, up at the building first. Okay, but yeah, that option is still. On the table and for review.
Ed, you were aware that there was an accident in back of the building, correct?
Yes, yes, I am.
So.
Result of it.
That's something that can be, could have been avoided, you know, with, if it was blocked off. So it's just, you know, that's concerns of ours also.
Unfortunately, it's unfortunate that the person that. Was being chased went up there and ran into the building. I, I agree. But we were aware of it and we got it repaired, um, so that we didn't have any entrance to the mall itself. That happened during the daylight too, didn't it?
It did. It was.
Okay.
Yep.
Sharon Russell, select board member. Any questions? Don, any follow up?
Nope. Thank you very much.
Okay, yes.
Can I add, since I missed the time, I wanted to add something else. In the last three weeks, other than last night, in the last three weeks. Due to Michael's efforts being there during the day and keeping the thing locked up, we have had no attempted. Um, entrances into the mall. Like where people were pulling anything open or plywood off, so, um. Our attention as well as your attention to it in, in, in bringing it to, um, a, a public forum, I think has really paid off so far.
Okay, good. Well, we appreciate very much your efforts. Um, I'm sure you will keep us surprised. We'll check in in the future and we'll probably revisit, you know, closing and putting some barriers or. Barriers up, but let's see how things go for the time being and. Uh, Steve, anything, um, to finish off from Castleton News position?
The last thing that I just wanted to throw out there is, I don't know if there's anything you can do with the graffiti. Uh, with the, they, you're generous to let them do the, um, the COVID booster shots up there. But they're right in front of some pretty crude graffiti every day. People are driving up through there. And just personally, if I owned a business, I would want to get rid of that graffiti.
We've had some of the graffiti, um, painted over already. Um, are you sure it hasn't been painted over yet?
No, that, I, I don't believe that the, the area in front of that.
I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask Michael about that tomorrow. He may call you and ask you, uh, in particular where. But I know we've done painting over the last two weeks to try to cover up. Some of the stuff that we saw.
Yeah, we had an incident, um, with some pretty crude graffiti along the Sears side, which got painted within a couple hours. Uh, I think I know what you're talking about, kind of between Kmart and Pennies that had been up for some time, but I think that's something that we can easily remediate. You know, certainly we'll take a look at it and then I will discuss that tomorrow.
Excellent.
So I'm sorry, that was Michael Sternberg on the phone. Sorry, I didn't recognize him earlier.
Hey, you know, I like to observe, but, uh, you know, certainly been here.
Okay.
Hi, Mike.
Well, again, thank you all for your efforts. We'll continue to keep an eye and, and keep us in the loop on information and let us know if there are any other measures that we can help with.
Okay, likewise. Likewise, do you guys see anything that, that, because we don't see. A lot, you know, everything that you do either, but if there's anything you see that, um, you want to share with us, please do. Okay?
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so I think we will go to, let's see, we have one introduction. Do we need to get the officer back on the. Road or should we keep him here to enjoy the flavor of select board meetings?
I'm sure he's very excited over there. Scintillating meeting.
All right, so we will go through our department head reports. Mike Rowe, Town. All right, so we will go through our department head reports. Mike Rowe, Town Recreation Director. Mike, of course, has already sweetened us up with leftover candy. So tell us how Halloween was at Rutland Town School.
So I have to thank, uh, everyone that helped out. Um, our seventh graders who came up with the games and designed everything did a fantastic job. We, I counted a lot of the, uh, raffle tickets that the kids were signing up for raffle and we had over, uh, about a hundred and thirty kids that put in for the raffle. That didn't count the little ones. And then if you figure at least one parent, if not two for the set of kids, Bill was there and so was Mary Beth. So I thought it was fantastic. We got great weather. Kids did a wonderful job. Tons of, um, community comments on, it was just nice to be outside. Um, so everything really kind of fell into place. So it went really well. Um, very happy with it and we will continue with that kind of style and just try to amp it up every year.
Great.
As we move forward. So I don't know if Bill and Mary Beth wants to say, because they were there and a perspective from a parent, um, who went through it. I mean, it was, it was a lot of fun.
Without seeing their faces, they're both grinning, so.
Yeah.
That was awesome.
Yeah. Well, you know, and then the kids were safe. That's, that's the other key is.
Right. They, uh, it was, it was a great, it was, oh, I didn't do it earlier. Well, we haven't done it earlier, but it is now and, and hopefully we will continue with that. Um, everything else, all the water shut off at all the parks. Um, so they're all winterized, ready to go. Um, the mall got taken today to get an evaluation to see how much, uh, it's going to cost to fix it and, and all that. So I'll have information for you next time. On that one, um, just a reminder that the senior luncheon, the December senior luncheon is December seventh. It's at Grace Congregational Church. Um, and I believe it's at its usual time, uh, eleven or eleven thirty. I will have um, exact details for you at the next meeting. Um, if you'd like to attend, I need to know sooner rather than later for a head count for the caterer using a different caterer this time. Um, and as of right now, the middle school band will be there to perform. So that's coming up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty familiar. This is a very large hall at Grace.
I've never been there, so I don't know.
Um, lots of table space, so separation is possible. The band will be, you know, plenty of, and, and the acoustics in there, the band is going to blow your socks off. I think it'll be good fun. Okay.
So that, that's coming up.
By the way.
Yes, so that's coming up. Just let me know.
It's eleven, it's usually eleven thirty.
Yeah, usually eleven thirty.
On Tuesday.
December seventh, would you have a board meeting that night?
Yeah.
So we're going to do the in-person, um, Jim and Randy have really been cranking that out, so hopefully that goes, uh, goes well. Um, I'm just trying to think, this is something else. Uh, we are, uh, expanding the ice skating rink at school, um, in the, um, in your, my budget was, uh, the school and I had communicated and it was a, they bought the rink package last year and it got used quite heavily. And so I said, um, I, I used it for rec during vacation and some other times and it was well attended, so I wanted to make it bigger, the system that we had, so I, um, had funds to do that. So if you saw that in the items, that's what that is for, is to make the rink bigger. Uh, for those that don't know, a lot of people put a lot of time and energy into bringing that back at the school, um, and it was used, obviously it's totally weather dependent. Um, but it was used a lot last year, um, by people in the town. And so we're just hoping to make it a little bit bigger. Um, and just expand on that. And as far as recreation, we'll add more events to that. Um, once again, weather dependent. So that's really cool. So that, if you saw that in there, that's what that is for.
Okay.
Um.
And that was out of your budget anyway, so there's no extra.
Yes, there's, yeah, no, that was all.
Great.
Money for that. That's what that was for. So if you're like, what the, that's, that's exactly.
Well, I sort of figured it out, yeah.
Yep, but I wanted to let you know that. Um, other than that, the last thing I have is, um, we've a meeting and we had our, um, rec committee meeting before our last meeting, but we didn't do a lot of reporting out of what happened at that meeting. We, for those that don't, uh, know that we did not get the, the, um, uh, VORAT grant that we applied for. Um, but we had talked about being able to still work on some of the projects at Northwood Park to, to make it just a bigger and better place for people of all abilities and interests at the park. Um, and so I gave you a packet on your, I gave you a packet, um, with the two items that we would, um, request that the board set aside money for, so that I can schedule um, for springtime construction and get on people's lists. Because that's obviously going to be an issue going forward and I'd rather have it done sooner than later. Um, the two things are, um, to include a series of mountain biking trails. Now Rosie, who has the majority of the packet, you'll see, if you look through it, there are trails that he has outlined where, um, and it is subject, we can change some of those trails. It's not set in stone. It was, if you look through it, um, it was in phases that we were going to do it. I've asked for the money for all the phases at once for this reason. If I ask them to build one trail, a mountain biker is going to ride for two minutes and then leave. Whereas if we get a network of trails to keep people there and interested is only going to increase the usage of the park and for people wanting to come to the park. And for me, rather than coming back and asking for more money or trying to fundraise more money, um, that's why if you look through it and see that it is in stages, that's why I'm asking for to have all the stages built at this time, um, in a one shot. Not one shot, but we can add more later if we have to, but this will give a bulk of trails in the park. The other one is the pickleball court, um, which is up on part of the basketball court and that is in there as far as fencing and relining. Those are the two items that I'm asking for. The total is about seventy-seven thousand and change. I've asked eighty, um, just in case there are some incidentals that pop up. Um, my, I don't have exact numbers, but I, I would request that the capital improvement fund be used. Um, I know that it was created five or six years ago, voted by the townspeople to make this fund. I know that off, just off the top of my head, rec has put, I would be shocked if it was um, under a hundred thousand dollars in that year after year. That's rolls over. Um, so I'm asking, um, that the board look at that as a place to pay for, um, these improvements and that was talk debt committee. Sharon, anytime there's anything I've left out, please do not hesitate.
No, I'd like to say something though.
The other, just let me, and then.
Yeah.
The other, um, improvements that we talked about that were in our original grant and, you know, Mary Beth and, uh, Andy McMillan, um, Tom Horak and Tom Horaks have been huge help in their own special fields. And I feel in talking with them that the other parts that we put in there that I can easily manage that through budgeting in the coming couple of years to complete kind of what our goal was. And then also, I was talking to Bill the other day and Andy and, um, we're going to create a, um, a survey and put it on with your approval of just asking what people might like to think to, to have or to be implemented up at the park for future years. And that can be something that can drive my capital plan, which you have, which these are in that capital plan as well. Um, going forward with the park, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So Sharon, go ahead.
Yeah, um, my, my heart is near and dear to recreation. I believe it gives our children options. It also gives our adult children options. Um, and, and, um, you know, the basketball court, the pickleboard, but the mountain biking trails, I mean, Mendon has those and our kids are going up there to use them, but wouldn't it be better? I mean, what a gift we have with Northwood Park. And I know budgets are tight, but Mike has put money back into the town. So I am going to make the motion that we give Mike the eighty thousand dollars to improve the park with the pickleball, the basketball courts, and then in the beginning of the network of biking trails within the park. Um, so that's my motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I will.
Okay, so we've got two seconds. That's good. Um, discussion.
I was first.
Okay, Don wins. Joe, you get to second the next motion.
As a former recreation chairman, I jumped the gun.
There you are.
No, it's a good idea, Mike, and it's a good investment. Of course, like I usually say, I think we should look at ARPA funds. I, I always think when we're doing capital improvements, we should look at ARPA funds because then that takes some burden off. Whether we have a capital fund or not in existence, we can use that for other things, but there's only certain things we can use ARPA for, and this is outdoors. And I think it qualifies under ARPA because we're encouraging an outdoor use, which.
Keeping people safe. But I, but I'd like to see that the motion goes through so that Mike has a direction and he can, in fact.
Separate from funding. I mean, you know.
All right.
The motion is to do it.
Yep.
All right, uh, on the phone, JP, any discussion?
I'm all set.
Okay, Joe?
Um, only that, you know, when we had the committee meeting, both Sharon and I, um, endorsed, uh, doing these projects and the use of the, uh, um, capital improvement fund. So, you know, that's, that's where we're coming from at this time.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
So is that, is that an amendment to the motion that it be funded from the capital improvement fund?
I, I thought that was the motion.
It was.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right, so the motion is eighty thousand dollars uh, from the capital improvements fund to do mountain biking trails and uh, the pickleball courts using existing basketball courts. Um, a, a question that I have, um, and maybe Byron's on the call and he can refresh my memory. Did we have to get any Act two fifty review for the, the, uh, shared use path? And do you need any Act two fifty review for the trail system?
Not that I know of, but if we do, then I will go through that and it can be, it can be contingent on that as well, if, if that's fine.
Okay, yeah, do, do look into it. I don't know. Byron can refresh my memory. Oh, okay, okay. Um, so that would be an open question I would have. And all of these bike, the bike paths are separate from the walking path?
Yes.
Are there any intersections?
Um, we will look at that, but as looking at it right now, it doesn't look like there's many intersections because it's off to the, if, if you're standing at Byron's garage and you're looking at the dump, the old dump, it's in kind of that area. So it was kind of designed not to interfere with our hiking trails. And if there are, then obviously appropriate signage and we would reduce the amount of interaction. And that is the goal, is that they can have their separate part. The walkers can feel comfortable just walking and not worried about, you know, somebody flying by.
Those guys go faster than I.
They do, they do, without a doubt.
And this is all the, the paths are all on town or school district property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And you've, you're going to need to get the school district's approval too, I would think.
Um, I will run it by the school, yes. I will take care of that. But most of it, looking at the map, I think, is, is in the town portion.
Yeah.
Of the park. When you split it, a lot of it is in the town portion.
Okay, I just want to make it very clear to the committee members who've put the time in on this, Joe, Joe and you Sharon, that making the motion to have it come from capital improvement funds is not mutually exclusive to using ARPA funds for that.
Yeah.
Because the ARPA funds can be transferred to any of those funds. They could be transferred to capital if the board chooses to do that.
Okay.
And we have some heavy decisions to make about these ARPA funds. We've got three years to do it, but every time the discussion comes up, we always we kind of garble and fade over whether we're going to or we're not going to or this.
You know, there's got to be someplace that we can contact to find out what.
No, no. I think, I think we make the decisions. I haven't heard of, and, and I've said this before and I want to make it very clear to the board. I haven't heard from anybody that there's some czar appointed that decides this.
No.
We are the ones that decide.
All right.
And the only exclusion is if somebody somewhere in some government says, oh, wait a minute, you can't use it for that, then we would be forced to use other funding for it.
Okay.
But if we're going to do something anyway,
Do it.
then we're going to spend
Yep.
town funds of one sort or another, once we've made that decision. So
Yep.
it really is not a, a negative to use ARPA funds for something if it's, if it's on the borderline and we say, well.
Well, I would think that would be, I mean.
Right now, the motion before you is to use the capital improvement funds.
That's correct.
Okay, just to be clear.
And that's fine.
Motion is, all right. And I don't disagree with, you know, exploring ARPA for a lot of different things, but it's going to take some threading through. So as you know, you've started into that, those regulations. So, okay, so are we ready to vote on the motion? Eighty thousand for, uh, the mountain biking trail system and pickleballs. I like saying that word.
Me too. I just wanted to see how it operates.
Of, and from the capital improvement funds. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
So I do want to remind.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, that's the one thing I want to say.
Wait, 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 hold it. Sorry, JP, was that you?
Yes, it is. I, I want to remind the board that we voted unanimously to fund the new public safety building from ARPA funds. So that's the priority the board has already determined.
Right, that's why the eighty thousand.
Yes, we did, but we did not say that we were going to commit one hundred percent of ARPA funds for that building. We said we were going to use the funds.
No, I think if you.
Am I mistaken, JP?
You are. The motion was clearly that we're going to fund the new public safety building with ARPA funds.
That's why, that's why I asked for the eighty thousand to come out of the improvement fund, John.
Okay.
All right, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Yep, but I want to thank Mike. But, you know, Mike, Mike takes recreation personal. Um, and, and he's not going to like me saying this about him, but too bad.
What are you going to say? I'll take all the candy back first.
You know, he truly cares about the kids. Um, I've had grandkids that have gone through that school and, and and great grandkids and, you know, they have a lot of respect for Mike. And he works with the kids as an equal, not as a superior. And I think that shows and, and his interest in, in Northwood to me is, you know, that's a piece of heaven because I've been involved with it for a lot of years, you even further, Don. So I, I know for you and for me, and I'm sure Mary, that, that Northwood Park is, is a symbol of what Rutland Town can do with the right direction. So thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, but now you can pay me after you leave.
Uh, please make sure that you let me know about the senior luncheon. Just email me. I'll send an email out and just respond yes or no. So we need to go to head count. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Fred.
In, in response to the question on the Act two fifty, I think that permit was renewed about fifteen years ago, give or take. And it, at that point in time, included a master plan of what was going to be added to the park and mountain bike trails was not there because mountain bikes didn't exist at the time, basically. So I think you wouldn't need to run that by two fifty.
Okay.
It may be.
At least get a, at least get an opinion.
You can get a jurisdictional opinion or i- if you have to do a permit, it's probably going to be a minor, minor.
So where would I go for that?
Chuck Wood, he's going to have all the answers.
Yeah, um, district.
Fourth floor.
Yeah, District Environmental Commission, number one.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Also have, we ought to, we really ought to get an opinion on those ARPA funds as far as the public safety building is concerned, because I think we're shortchanging ourselves if we commit a hundred percent. I mean, I, I'm in favor of doing that. But I, I don't agree with JP that, that this board voted to put a hundred percent in there because we already have expended ARPA funds on, on those, uh, air purifiers.
Well, I think, let's look into where we can get some, you know, you and I have both gone on the League of Cities and Towns website and trying to sort through it. There may be more information now as towns begin to start their proposals. Um, I'm pretty sure that some things within the proposed public service building might be covered.
Oh, I am.
Question I have is how much of it? So let's start doing some digging down on. Question I have is how much of it? So, let's start doing some digging down on that. I think we now have somebody at the Regional Commission, Barbara, who is specializing in that?
H A L L, Eric Hall.
Okay.
And as I understand it, um, the feds are still working on the guidance for how, how these funds will be, could be spent.
Okay. And we just had Congress pass, um, uh, the, what, Build Back Better Bill? And some of the infrastructure, Fred's saying no.
I think that's the one that got passed. It was the infrastructure bill.
It was the infrastructure bill, which is the one, I think, that's possible it could have some monies for just what we're talking about, but so let's, let's dive in a little deeper and see what we can find out. Okay, thank you very much, Mike Rowe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, okay, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Uh, good evening. Only one thing tonight. Uh, I got another application, uh, for you guys to approve. His name's Chris Alexander. Um, lives on Flori Heights, and he is, he'll be a junior until, um, March.
Okay, so he's a, a town resident, a junior? Um, and let's see, you, you've, you've gone through the approval process and he's passed muster?
Yep, he's passed all the, uh, tests.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Show move.
Show move, yeah.
Joe got this one, Sharon. And Sharon's seconding, okay? Any discussion? If not, all in favor of Chris Alexander as the junior member of the Rutland Town Fire Department, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I had tonight.
Um, how many firefighters do we now have, Chief?
Uh, we have about twenty-nine, I believe.
Okay. What's your goal?
Fifty.
I, I like to see fifty active.
Okay. Well, we'll keep working on it. We got folks sitting here in the audience. Maybe they would like to join the fire department. We'll see.
I see some young ones. Well, I see at least one young one.
Okay, thank you, Chief Clark. Appreciate it. Um, Byron, oh, and we need to set up, JP and, and I need to set up a, um, fire department budget review meeting with you, so stay tuned on that, please.
Okay, thank you.
Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Good evening, Mary.
Good evening.
I don't have a whole lot for you this evening. Um, that's just other than to report that the, uh, new truck is, uh, in service and is working fine. The little truck is down at Handy's Garage, uh, to get the new brakes and, uh, ball joint, um, on the right side and an inspection sticker, and that will be ready to go out to bid. Um, I would recommend that you put it out to bid with a minimum bid of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
If that sounds reasonable to you.
Okay, um, that's your recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so is there, I guess we should move along and get that put out to bid. Is there a motion on that?
Show move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Who didn't get, oh, Joe is seconding. Um, discussion? If not, all in favor of putting the old truck out to bid for twenty-five thousand, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, any negatives? Motion carries, so please go ahead and do that, Byron.
Okay, will do. Um, other than that, Mary, that's all I had for you this evening. Um, I will try my best to have a budget in somebody's hands, um, before the next board meeting.
Okay, great. Um, Highway Committee should probably meet with you and go over the budget.
Yep, that'd be fine.
So, just a reminder, uh, Highway Committee members, please do uh, get together and see what you can do about meeting with Byron. Okay, and on the- Oh, sorry, yes, 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 thank you. Um, in your packet. Byron, we have some things that you wanted us to take a look at.
Yep, those are grant documentations, uh, they need to be signed. And then I can email those to the appropriate people in Montpelier and get, get our reimbursement.
Okay, so the first is, um, letter of intent for compactor grant. This is item E in your packet. Uh, this is, let's see, we are, the signed letter is due by November nineteenth.
That's the-
This is for-
The equipment grant from DEC. Um, the first round, we were not eligible for anything. And apparently, there was some money left over. So those of us that were not eligible on the first round are now eligible for this, for this money on this, on this second round. And there's-
Okay. And this is for a plate or jumping jack compactor to install drainage culverts. The state maximum award is thirty-two hundred. And we are required to match cash match of eight hundred or twenty percent of equipment cost.
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll entertain them, oh, it looks like we have to sign this and get this in, so I'll entertain a motion to approve this and authorize me to sign on behalf of the town. Is that the way it goes, or do you sign it, Byron?
Uh, no, I think they request the select board or some other town official.
Okay.
Yeah, because it says at the top, we, the legislative body-
Okay, that's a good one.
Municipality of Rutland.
Show move.
Motion's made to approve the grant application. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, okay, Joe this time. Um, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. I'm, I'm scribbling my signature. Alright, what's the next item?
There should be two other grant items there. One is the, one is a Better Backroads Grant for the Gleason Road Project. And the other is Grants and Aid Work that was done, uh, that's a DEC, uh, money.
Okay, so let's take, um, the-
Show move.
For both of them?
Yeah.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the other two. I'm looking for who has to sign. It looks like Chair of the Select Board. So that's in your motion, right, JP?
It is.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the other two grants, um, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries and you've approved those. And we'll just leave them here and you'll get them in, Byron?
Yes, I will. I'll pick them up tomorrow.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any applications yet for the position of Road Commissioner?
I have not received any.
Um, I haven't heard of any, so.
Even from those persons of interest, Mary?
I, I think that's correct. We've, we've had people who are interested, but nobody who's actually put in an application yet. So I would encourage the Highway Committee to have a chat with Byron about, you know, what happens if? I think he made it pretty clear last time, staying on-
He's got a little bit of a smile on his face right now.
He does, I know. Okay.
You know, we could authorize a no cut, no trade option.
Other than that-
With bonuses.
Alright, um, thank you, Byron. Anything else for us?
No, that's all I had for you tonight. Thank you, Mary.
Okay, appreciate it.
Bye.
Thank you. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief. And if you have someone with you that you'd like to introduce?
I do. This is Officer Jimmy Plakus, uh, originally from this community in New York. Uh, he's youngest of eight children. He, uh, started his law enforcement career in February of two thousand seventeen with the Rutland City Police. Has recently left and come to join us. Uh, he's a driving instructor, and I know he's well thought of by the law enforcement community here in Rutland County, so welcome Jimmy Plakus to Select Board. This is Don Chaffee, Mary Ashcroft, Karen Russell, JP, and Joe Gennaro.
Nice to meet you all. There wasn't COVID times, I'll come and shake your hands. I understand we're all still in the thick of it. But I'm, I'm very excited to be here. I've been looking forward to this for the majority of this year at this point, and really excited to hit the ground running and finally be part of the team.
Okay, well, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Yes, they are.
How's your youngster?
We've heard a lot about you.
She's good. It's almost her bedtime.
Okay.
I also want to add that he's a, a town resident. I won't give you his address, but he does live in the town.
Okay, very good. Good, alright, well, thank you for coming in, and I'm sure you'll give us lots of feedback on what's happened so far in the Select Board meetings, so.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think we're meeting with the police. We're trying to get a Police Committee's meeting set up. We can't do it Friday morning at nine.
He said something about Monday?
Monday at nine.
Monday at nine.
Okay, good. So that works for the two of us. Police Committee meeting at nine. Is that okay with Ted?
Uh, I haven't checked with Ted yet, but it probably will be.
Okay. Um, so Bill, if you could warn that, please? Thank you very much. So what have you got for us, Chief?
So, calls for service, we had fifty-eight, uh, last
Wow.
two-week period. Uh, a number of them are are, are traffic stops. They're an extra officer, um, so it's good, we should be up to, pretty close to seven days' coverage now. Not twenty-four-seven, but seven days, week or six anyways.
Yeah.
So we're excited for that. Uh, other than that, I really don't have a whole lot going on.
Alright, so I, I see, well, a number of things here. You're, you're out there, Ted's out there. Officer Plakus has already started in.
Yep.
Uh, Officer Shimmerhorn?
Officer Shimmerhorn, uh, well, sometimes when things are slow in school, we'll go out and run radar on post roads, so.
Good, excellent.
Yes, I slowed down now because I've seen her.
Yes.
You're the target, ma'am. And, um, Second Constable John Paul Fignan's out there too, so.
Yes.
Very good.
Only thing I, I got a question about is, uh, we worked on the letter to DCF. I don't know if you guys have a chance to read it, or-
Okay, um, I think that, I saw that in the packet.
You guys want to read over and make changes, or send it, or?
Okay, we had, um, the town has drafted a letter that's going to, uh, Commissioner Sean Brown, Department of Children and Families. Uh, it is item C, and this is expressing the Select Board's desire that we not, that the Holiday Inn not be, continued to be used to house the homeless. Um, citing, um, this is well done, to citing all of the difficulties that we have had, our health officers investigations, the problem with the gas leak last year and the explosion, and on, and on the, the, the accidents on the highway resulting from some, some of these folks. So, um, have you had a chance to look this over, and do you have any motion regarding it?
I make the move that we accept the letter and that we send it.
Motion's been made to accept the letter as drafted and to sign it and send it. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion?
I can tell you one thing. I deal with the homeless on an everyday basis. And my homeless people say if, if the mission is, is full, we'll sleep outdoors. We don't want to be down there. So, when the homeless themselves, the true homeless, are afraid to be at that hotel, then it tells you something.
I'll say this, the, the mission runs a tight ship. They know the rules, and if they break the rules, they can't be there. That is not the case. There's no one there running a tight ship. It's just come in, take your money, and hopefully everything goes smoothly so that we don't have to deal with it. And then when we make noise, then all of a sudden, it's the up and down, you want to help us as much as possible, but it's not a well-run organization. For the homeless, let's put it that way.
And it's the true homeless. That's the, that's the issue with, is that we're not getting, always getting the true homeless down there.
JP, anything to add?
Uh, no, I did have something else I wanted to ask the Chief, though, on another subject.
Okay. So, um, motion's been made and seconded to sign this letter and send it on to the Commissioner Brown at DCF. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, I'll circulate it among those folks here. Uh, JP?
Ed, did you have a chance to review any letters of interest for the position of First Constable?
I only know the names, I haven't read the letters.
Pardon me?
I know the names, I haven't, uh, read the letters.
You didn't review the applications?
I didn't see an application.
Did you look at the information that people interested in the spot submitted to the town?
I have not seen any of that information, JP. I, I don't know if it's been forwarded to me or not. I'm assuming no, because I, I don't have it.
Yeah.
How, how would the Chief not have this information if the Select Board does? How did that happen?
I don't have.
Bill?
Um, I don't know, JP. Remembering it's a, it's not a hired position uh, under the police chief. It is a, a First Constable position. Of course, we want the Chief's input. There's no question about that. Um, but I did have it in my packet. And-
So I think we should get that to the Chief tonight, so he can take a look at that. I'm surprised, I'm surprised it wasn't given to the Chief.
Okay. Well, so yes, we have, um, three applicants for the position, and I guess that leads me to the question of in the other times when there was been a vacancy, um, we have called the applicants in for an interview, um, is, on the other hand, this is a temporary position um, until town meeting, when we would assume that the, uh, voters would vote on the town constable position. So what's your pleasure with this one? Do we interview these folks, or make an appointment maybe next week after we've had the chance to?
I, I'd like to see the individuals.
Don would like to interview?
I think it's important to interview, but I also think it's important that the Chief is here.
Okay.
He's the man that's going to be pretty much in charge of the police force, and if he has to, so, um, I, you know, you wouldn't go to a fire with me as in charge, because I have no business knowing what it is. You'd go to the fire chief. And I don't think we have any business appointing anybody without the input of the Chief of Police.
Well, and, and I agree, then, but because the interview would be in front of the board, that would also include our Second Constable, who should be in on the interview as well.
Exactly. I agree, Don.
Okay, so, um, shall we try and set this, these interviews for prior to our next board meeting, as in, like at five o'clock?
Sure.
Could, could, Mary, could could we do that as just a, um, a special meeting next Tuesday, possibly, at six?
Well, great minds thinking alike, because Don just made that same suggestion.
Next Tuesday.
You know, that way we can just kind of take the time we need and not be rushed. I don't like being rushed through things, especially if we're interviewing people, and I, I imagine they don't want to be either.
I agree.
Agree.
Okay, I'm making a note.
Is that okay for you?
I don't think we have-
My calendar right now.
Any conflicts? Bill won't be here. Okay, um, okay, so Bill can, can set it up. We'll see if all three will be available. It should be, I think, an in-person meeting, because none of us really have the technology skills to Skype these folks in. It's- It should also be an executive session, I believe.
Yes, personnel.
I agree.
Okay. So if, uh, why don't we go ahead and interview the three candidates that we have beginning at six o'clock next week, Tuesday, the sixteenth? And Bill will set it up, but won't be here, so. And the chief is invited, of course. And John Paul will be on the select board team anyway.
Did you say six noon?
Six, yeah. Okay.
What's the date next Tuesday?
The sixteenth.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday is the sixteenth. All right, good, thank you. Anything else for the chief? Oh, and Bill, would you make sure the chief gets the, the information about the candidates too, please?
Yes, I, I've talked to three different people that have not too much good to say about the proliferation of, of uh, panhandlers. That's gone from one to three now. I was home today on Route Seven in the narrow section by Route Four, somebody standing there.
Yeah, the guy, I was down there this morning. I was coming out and the guy, the, the girl, yeah, the girl stepped right out in front of two cars to stop them. I don't know if you can do anything about it, but.
If she stops traffic, we can do something about that.
Well, she did.
Well, they're getting more aggressive now because people are, people are sick of them, so they're just driving by and they're just standing there, so they want to do something.
Yeah, now they step out in front of you.
Now they're stepping out in front to stop them like it's a coin drop or something and, you know, that's obstructing traffic. I mean, that's an obstruction charge.
Yeah, but if you or I hit them then.
It's called disorder conduct number five.
Okay.
I didn't hear you. It's called disorderly conduct number five. There you go.
Okay. So you'll keep an eye down there, maybe a few extra passes through there?
Yes, but usually when we're around.
They're going to behave when he's on.
They behave themselves. When we leave, it's different.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if somebody gets a cell phone video and wants to forward it to us.
I'll take a picture the next time.
That would be awesome. A video of somebody standing in the road, send it to me or send it to the police department or call us and we could definitely work with that.
Okay, good. That's an invitation, folks.
I hate to keep bringing it up, Ed, but you know, it's just a bad, bad look for Rutland Town. You're the second person to tell me that today. I had a long conversation with a gentleman on the phone saying, the first thing they see when they come to Rutland Town, Vermont is three people standing in the road begging for money. Yes. Standing right in front of a hiring now sign.
I know.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, can't get any crazier than that.
Anything else for our chief of police? Okay, thank you, Ed. See you next Monday. All right, Barbara Noyes-Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
And Mary Beth Polley.
And Mary Beth Polley. Welcome. Yes.
So good to see everybody.
Yeah.
Again, um, with all due respect, we'd like to request that we put back on the table uh, the discussion about the Conservation Commission and whether that should go on the ballot in March. It was tabled in, was it July when we first came here? This would be an advisory group and the only way that a town like Rutland Town can set a group like this up is to go to the ballot. Not being a chartered town, you might, there's another option, but. So Mary Beth has been our champion at the Town Planning Commission um, for, for this cause. Um, and I think I'll just toss it over to her and, and you can take it away.
Sure, so um, in July, we, we talked about having a potential Conservation Commission in town and this would be um, separate from the rec committee, but could work with the rec committee on um, trails in town, focus more on the educational component, so um, nature trails involving the school, um, getting more volunteers involved in helping to organize events like that. Um, uh, so this would be a three to nine member committee or um, commission that any proposed activities would be brought to the select board. Um, part of the, the mission of the Conservation Commission would be to help the town apply for grants like the VORAC grant that um, I was involved with, with some of the other volunteer, volunteers in town. Um, and Andy McMillan um, also expressed interest in being on the Conservation Commission. He's been involved with the Disc Golf um, that's existing at the, at Northwood Park.
Was he the young man? Oh, right there.
Oh, hi, Andy.
Thank you.
So one of the, one of the um, things that we talked about in, back in July was um, just whether there would be enough interest in town to, to support another board in addition to the Planning Commission. Um, so Andy is one of the people that is interested in being on this if it goes forward. Um, and then Sherman Hunter, who's on the Planning Commission, is also interested. So that's our three minimum and then I think there would be other town residents who would be interested. Um, some of the other towns that have conservation commissions that we talked to, they said um, having a, a younger member, so you don't have to be eighteen, but um, having someone from a high school that's a town resident or a college student that's interested in natural resources, conservation. Um, they said it's great to have represented, representation from them also. Um, so we just think that had, well, and then as we talked about in July, um, the Planning Commission voted to, to support having the um, Conservation Commission. Um, so that would complement what the Planning Commission is already doing for parks. Um, it would just have a, another group that would um, have different things to offer and would be more based in um, the outdoor recreation, less built recreation and more um, trails and um, interpretive signs, um, educational programs.
And if there wasn't interest in this being recreation, you know, minded, um, this, this commission could do other things for the town. It could help the Planning Commission with the town plan, um, you know, by, by looking at the nat- natural resources around town and uh, maybe evaluating those. It could look at historical sites, could look at archaeological sites, and we have a few of those, um, and play an advisory role with those. So there's, there's lots of things this commission could do. Um, we're offering a few here, um, but it would probably, if this went to the ballot, we'd probably want to center on a few of the functions that, that um, we wanted this group to do.
I just think it's one more layer of government that we don't need. I'm sorry.
Well, but.
Okay, well, Sharon, Don?
Well, I'd like to play, I'd like to play back JP's comments when we had the first discussion because I think he had the most pointed things to say, but uh, you know, and you, you, listen, you may not like what I have to say this evening, but, but I want you to take it seriously. There's some serious problems sometimes in this town about where the executive authority is. You were told, Barbara Noyes-Pulling, that the board voted not, that we had no interest in pursuing this. And I, I'm under the understanding that you knew this and that Mary Beth, you, you didn't feel that way and you wanted to persist with it and that you actually had to tell Mary Beth, look, the board has decided that they don't have an interest in this. And yet now we're getting this proposal back again. You have to understand that you don't run the board, the board makes the decisions and you may be right that the townspeople have to approve this, but we have to recommend as a board to put it on the ballot or not for the people even to decide. And it just disturbs me sitting here as part of an executive authority to have our, our voice and our view and our considered opinion not regarded favorably by the Planning Commission. That, that just bothers me. We, we made the decision.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry you um, feel that way and that's your interpretation. I remember um, part of the discussion being that there was not a full board that night and that maybe uh, we should address the full board. There's that and um, the, the fact that we're um, if to get something on the ballot, if, if that were to happen, and I understand the obstacles there and the odds there, um, but to get something on the ballot, we would, um, the select board and the town would have to um, you know, decide on that fairly soon, especially with the budget discussions coming up.
The way it gets on the ballot is either by petition or if the board decides that they wish on their own to put it on. And my understanding from that board meeting was that there wasn't a majority interest on this board and, in doing that. Now, if that's changed, I need to know why because the, we've had the discussion before and, and it just, it just seriously bothers me that we're having this discussion again. Uh, I, this, this board is the final authority on that.
Well, no, the voters are actually the final authority and I think, I think the, the proposition is, I mean, I, I think these folks are giving us a heads up. Either, either we may be um, rethinking and then putting the ballot item on ourselves or they may take the petition route and see if they can create a, I, I'm just speculating on that. I don't know if that's what you would do.
My, I would just like, one way or the other, just a vote. Would, did you, did you already vote on?
We can vote.
Whether, that's all, that's all we're looking for in coming down.
I will say, you know, and I know I spoke in favor of the Conservation Commission for a number of reasons and I think the reasons have become a little more acute now. Um, some of our grant writing efforts, um, we're, we're losing. Um, Byron Hathaway is no longer going to be around helping us with some of the grants that he has done in the past. Um, so I'm concerned about that. At the same time, there are funding sources opening up at the state and local level we cannot possibly keep in, on top of all of them and all of the potential. Um, Mike Rose scrambled, you know, to put together with, with the help of these folks, um, the proposals that we have now agreed to, to fund on the local level when we weren't able to get the grant. And we've got young people that are interested in helping our town and I think that's probably the most important thing and it's pretty darned exciting to me to find that there are folks willing to give their time. We're not going to be around forever, our generation, and if folks are interested in the town and they want to help out, more power to them and I want to do what I can to encourage that. So that's my position. Um, JP and Joey? Haven't heard from you.
So, nothing about, nothing about agreeing with Sharon is in any way intended to discourage young people from working within the current infrastructure to give input and support and become involved. I want to make that very clear. There are plenty of opportunities for these folks to become involved in our town. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Um, well, I'm not exactly sure what the commission's um, authority would be or their job description would be, so I need a little more information. I, that might be a meeting that I was hanging and didn't get all the information on and before I could say yea or nay, I, I just need to understand a little more that I need to see something in writing that I can read over and understand what their purpose would be.
Yeah, it's, it's, Joe, it's, it's, the legislation, the statute is very broad. Um, about a hundred towns across the state have conservation commissions and they do all sorts of things. And uh, what we're proposing is what we've mentioned tonight. Uh, what, that's what we think would be the best bet for, for Rutland Town.
Well, should we put this on the agenda for our next meeting? Um, so that we can pull information together um, and provide what is some background so Joe will have an informed vote? Let me put it this way, is there?
You know, but, but the other thing is, is to Don and Sharon and JP's point, if this was brought before the board and there was a majority vote to not pursue this, then I don't see why we need to keep doing it because, you know, the board has made a majority vote to go in one direction and um, that may still be the case, I don't know, but I would, like I said, I believe that was a meeting that I, I was unable to attend.
Yeah, I don't remember. Mary Beth?
Sure, just to address a couple, a couple of things. Um, so when we came in July, we had a, a discussion and, you know, all expressed your opinions. Joe, um, wasn't there at that meeting and that's one of the reasons that it was tabled? So no vote, at least at that meeting, was official vote was made. So that's all that we're asking for now. And if there, and it's fine to wait for two weeks, I'm happy to come back, um, provide any other information, happy to email, um, with any questions. Um, and then once, if it's voted yes, that would be great. If it's voted no, at least my plan is never, you know, don't bring it up again, at least not in the foreseeable future. You know, I don't want to, you know, the intent isn't to keep bringing it to you guys. We are just looking for one vote.
Okay.
And we would like to have enough, enough time, which two weeks is fine, um, just that we can plan if it does go on the ballot and get the word out to people.
Okay.
So let me make a, let me make a suggestion here because I, I appreciate your, your forthrightness. I, I'll make a motion that we not approve the Conservation District so that we can at least move this forward.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to not approve the Conservation Commission.
And I want to make something perfectly clear. I support young people, but I think, I think we have enough committees and commissions. I just don't think, I, I'm with a great JP on that one. And John and Don.
And I agree for the same reasons. I just think it's a, it's more bureaucracy and I, and to be honest with you, uh, it's a, it's difficult to have to feel that way because as JP said, there, there are many ways, including exactly what you're doing and, and the work that you do, which we appreciate. The, the Planning Commission has done some yeoman work here uh, in, recently in, in the past, well, since you've been chairman, Barbara. I'll be honest with you. You've, you've played a really great leadership role and that Planning Commission needs more young members and there should be more applications and, and you can get involved. And quite frankly, there's nothing to stop you or anybody that wants to work with you, that would want to work with you on a, on a, on a Conservation Commission, from helping the Planning Commission out and in fact, helping Mike out just as a volunteer group. It doesn't have to be formalized, but I just don't see the need to create another bureaucracy. We, we have enough trouble in this town controlling the, the ones that we have. And, and Sharon, you know, we have a hard enough time scheduling meetings. It's a, it really is a lot more than a part-time job in a small town, so uh, that's why I would, I would vote no.
Well, actually, I'd use your reasons to vote yes. We could use some help. Um, so that's all I'm going to say. Joe, do you have any last thoughts?
Uh, no, but I will tell you that I will abstain from voting due to lack of knowledge on the subject.
All right. Motion by JP is to not um, approve the Conservation Commission?
Second.
And it was seconded?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of the motion not to approve, please say aye.
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 Um, I will vote no because I think we could use a Conservation Commission and Joe is abstaining, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you for bringing this back to our attention. Um, and we certainly appreciate your efforts and you, and Andrew, I know you have also, you've, you've written to us. Um, and I know you folks have worked with Mike and I hope that you will continue to, to help us out. We're, it's great. And I know you folks have worked with Mike and I hope that you will continue to to help us out. We're it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you for reconsidering it.
Pardon?
Thank you for reconsidering it.
Oh, okay, all right. Anything else?
Yes, I've got some. Do you want to go home to the kids?
Uh, sure.
You're certainly free to go. With the Planning Commission, the Town Planning Commission, we've adopted our own set of rules of procedure that kind of usurp Robert's rules for the most part. So it's all written in one place, so we can use that handy little guide. With the ordinances, you asked us to come up with what we thought the the priorities should be. And we have a list. For new ordinances, Bill says he gets the most complaints about noise in town. So we thought we'd pull something together there, which would probably include target practice as well. Livestock, we want to look at, particularly with horses and whether there needs to be a limit on the number or what other towns are doing. We'd like to look at that.
This is a farm town.
Yeah.
I don't think I don't I I, for one, would not support putting any kind of limits on on livestock of any kind. But then again, I'm married to a farmer, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it started out as a farm town, so.
I I'm not quite sure.
Are you talking nuisance?
I'm not quite sure. I I think it has to do maybe with neighbor complaints or potential of that. It came up. It just kind of came out of the blue with our last meeting, this particular idea. So we can pursue it or not. If if.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm 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 on a farm. I have animals too.
Yeah, so.
And.
I would vote not to pursue it. I this is a farm town.
The only the only the only thing I would offer from a health officer's perspective is that you can sometimes get on a residential lot too many animals that can affect have an adverse effect, not only on that property, but neighborhood neighbor properties as well. So just offer that for food for thought. It it. Yes, we are a farming community, but we also have some densely, some residential development that's very dense.
And JP, would the criteria be the number of animals or the space that they have, the number and the space?
Well, I'm I'm trying. I'm working through that issue right now as a health officer. And it's not, there's no easy answer. It's a kind of a combination. But for the Department of Agriculture to get involved, it's got to be more than four horses. But I don't know. It I'm still working through it, so I don't have any answer for you, Barbara.
Maybe we put that on the back burner.
Yeah, there's also, you know, best farming practices. Maybe the Department of Ag can.
Yeah, and and there's the whole, you know, what towns can regulate and what they can't. And it's the sop.
The number of animal legislation too.
Well, you know, I might have I might have mentioned to you this before, but it it is crazy as it might sound. It's going to come down to whether or not horse manure is solid waste.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was part of the discussion too, was the the waste disposal.
What is the issue here? Because I I didn't get the first part of the discussion. The issue is whether we want you to pursue.
Drafting an ordinance. Trying to, yeah.
An animal ordinance or for for permitting of farm animals on residential property.
Not so much farm, yeah, farm and recreational. I know that some towns have a limit of, say, three horses on a less than one acre parcel or a one acre par. You know, that kind of limitation. It's both for the horse horse health as well as for the environment they live in.
What we could do for this one is just do a survey of what other, you know, of other towns.
I was going to suggest there must be.
Yeah.
Must be some language out there already.
Right, yeah, and 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 give you the options, show you what's what the options are out there.
I mean, you sure as heck don't want five cows on a quarter of an acre. I mean, I understand that.
Right.
Yeah.
When you've got seventy acres or sixty-five acres, that's a farm.
Have at it.
Well, there's issues.
Thank you. Thank you, neighbor. The pigs and cows will be arriving momentarily.
This is a this is a good one because I have some friends that that live in another municipality close to here. And they have neighbors that aren't, they're not right on top of each other, but they're close enough that they're within earshot. And this person happens to have chickens and has a rooster. And what what did Bill, what was Bill's major complaint that he gets? Noise.
Yeah.
And the rooster getting up at four o'clock to do what roosters do at four o'clock.
Well, having raised hens for many years and then had a friend give me some they thought were hens and turned out to be roosters.
Oh, God.
Yeah, you know, I can see the other side of the story too.
Yeah, and and where I'm coming from, Barbara, is I had a neighbor who was in the development across from our farm. And she said, you've got to do something about your cows. They have fecal matter on your behind. I said, well, you know, we don't go around wiping our cows. And she was serious.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's get back to.
Drink my morning coffee to that.
So noise is at the top of the list.
Noise. And then also for new ordinance, something along the lines of building permits and requiring developers to sit down with the Planning Commission just to let us know what their plans are, because that's not happening. You know, we we have a voluntary kind of a building permit. Maybe make that a little bit more mandatory and then a discussion just to just to give us a heads up of what the plans are.
Yeah, my I think we I think it one I I think it's a good idea too. I think we were running into the problem of thinking people should be filing something but not having an ordinance behind it. So this would put the ordinance behind the building ordinance, the the building permit thing. So, okay.
Okay, so we'll look into that. And then for review purposes, what's already on the books that may need to be updated? Public Assembly, public nuisance, ATV use, where ATVs are used, I guess, and permit tracking. We have a permit tracking ordinance. I'm not that familiar with it. And probably not many residents are either, but we thought we should take a look at that.
Okay. You may find under your nuisance one enough that to address some of the other concerns like noise, like animals. So, you know, I that you might want to spend some time on that one. That could be good.
Yeah.
I think all of those should be looked at.
Okay, okay.
Other folks, what do you think?
So on the especially on the building permit one, did you did you say we we should do an ordinance first? That 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 gives some power to the.
I think that's what Barbara was suggesting, yeah.
Yeah, it needs a little more teeth.
Well, I I agree because what the system that we have right now puts one heck of a lot of pressure on your board of listeners. And 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 here's the reason. Because it's not mandatory, it doesn't have to be reported.
Right.
But if you know about it, you you're kind of like duty bound to go and put the put the property that's being improved or done whatever to on the books so that the proper valuation can be determined. And when you do that, then all of a sudden you're the bad guy because you ratted on somebody. You know, and that's not just a that's just not a good way to run a town. There should be a requirement so that the onus isn't on somebody to report somebody for building a improper building without a permit.
That's a good point.
Where did you hear that? Whoa, your neighbor told. Isn't that wonderful?
Well, you know, I used to be a zoning administrator, not to use the Z word, but my best resources of things going on in town were people I had caught building without a permit. So, you know, they wanted to rat on their neighbors.
Oh, yeah. Until you get caught, they want everybody to get caught.
Yeah. Okay, so did we give you enough direction on that one?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for looking into those. Yeah.
Yeah, and not to extend this too much longer. I'll I'll skip the pocket part for now and then maybe next meeting bring you up to date.
Okay.
On that. But one other thing we're looking at, I'm going to be talking to Kevin Brown tomorrow on the phone about, is a recent Supreme Court ruling from September called Snowstone.
Yeah, I I did look at that decision.
And, yeah, it essentially says or gives developers the go-ahead to in a one-acre town like Rutland Town to bypass Act 250 if the footprint of of their of their project, in this case, this court case is a quarry of some sort, is less than an acre. I think this one came in at point seven-three acres or something like that on a hundred and seventy-six acre parcel. And still the Supreme Court said, oh, but your footprint is only this big. It's this small. So no Act 250 is needed there. So, you know, we're wondering as a planning commissioner, you know, where do we go? What do we do with this? I mean, how how do how can we how can we guide development? If people can come in and it's almost like a almost like a loophole, if they can make the development small enough. You know, what controls do we have? We kind of lose more controls with this. But I'll be talking to Kevin tomorrow and getting his input and his interpretation of what the ruling was. Again, it was the State Supreme Court.
How did you read it, Mary?
I think Barbara sent it to me. And, you know, frankly, that has existed in state law. If you have a project, and we've had it, the Taco Bell up, up across from the old mall. That was carefully created to be less than one acre so they could put a commercial business in without triggering Act 250. And of course, we don't have zoning. So it has happened. It has happened in this town. And I think one of the decisions cited was, wasn't there a Rutland Town?
I think so.
Yeah, there was something in there. So this problem has existed. Developers are, I think they're getting a little more creative. And I think that's what Snowstone decision was about. You can go on the Supreme Court website and they issue, you can go through their their decisions that have been issued. So it's free. You can just scroll down through.
But the decision was the decision on the parcel size or the footprint size of the actual development?
Well, it sounds like it was on the footprint size. There was a little more to it because there was also an access road, as I recall from from the facts. So go take a look at it. I mean, it's an interesting read and I think it's a pretty good analysis of where Act 250 can and can't reach. So.
Yeah, and it was interesting, the local Act 250 representative here said, you you're going to have to apply for a permit. But then got that got overturned in one in in two court decisions.
Yeah.
Culminating in the Supreme Court.
Kevin's Kevin's advice and and the reading will be very important to us because that's one of the major arguments that's being used to promote zoning in the town is that, well, if you have zoning, then you don't have to comply with the 251 acre rule. Well, if you don't anyway, then.
Then you have no protection and you sure need zoning, Don.
Pardon me?
You you have no protection and you do need zoning. That's been my point. And all of these little parceling together of teeny ordinances, if we had a comprehensive zoning package, we wouldn't need to mess with many of those. That's my spiel and I get to do it once every, you know, two or three months or so. So you have it.
Yeah, and in this case, it's a quarry. It's not like a commercial, you know, organ outfit or building opening up.
We eagerly await your interpretation and delivery of Kevin's advice.
Okay, anything else for Barbara? Joe or JP?
This is not necessarily for Barbara, Mary, but I had a nice conversation with Bill Matson about ten days ago. And I do I do believe Bill is our representative to the Regional Planning Commission. And he would not like to continue that capacity for personal reasons. So I he asked me to bring that to the board's attention and I am doing that. And I believe we would probably have to come up with someone else for that position.
Yeah, thank you. And Bill told me the same. He was here for the BCA meeting. So this is our representative to the Regional Planning Commission. And Bill had been holding that position. So we need to find someone to step forward and do that. If there are, and, you know, I I think it conflicts with the Select Board meeting night. I looked at it once as a possibility because I kind of like that stuff, but.
Yeah, occasionally.
It 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 conflicts. So we would need to find someone, probably not on the Select Board. But there's the Planning Commission and some of the folks who were here tonight. So maybe we can get some names of folks interested in serving in that capacity. And the Transportation Council affiliated with the Regional Planning Commission, we also need to fill those positions. Jim Hall has been our alternate. And I think we decided last meeting that we weren't going to bump him up to the full position unless we had his permission. We had some something in the minutes about that. So we need to revisit both of those things. We need reps to help us out and then report back on a fairly regular basis to the Select Board about what's going on. Fred used to do that. Okay. Yeah, so look around, maybe talk the position up. And well, let's put that on the agenda for the next Select Board meeting, if you will, Bill. Thank you.
Yeah, the monthly meetings, summer's off.
You should be so lucky. Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you very much, Barbara.
Sorry to take so much time.
Okay. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Don't really have a lot to say tonight. The audit process is almost complete, so that report will be out momentarily. And that's about it right now.
Okay.
So enjoy your supper and happy birthday.
Happy birthday to our Town Clerk.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, any questions of our Town Clerk and Treasurer?
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant.
Evening. Not much left to go over. So you have in your packet, letter, letter D, we have a new business that's recently opened up in town, Mountainside Mutts. They have taken over the former Norman Rockwell Museum location. So you have a letter, and Mary has there in the pink folder, the original, to send to them.
This is our.
Repeat your name again.
Mountainside Mutts.
Mutts?
Yes.
I thought you said nuts.
All right, so we'll leave that out along with our other things for members to sign. It's our Welcome to Town letter that we do. Okay.
And on your desk, the only thing we haven't gone over is Rob Stubbs, at the request of the Water Sewer Committee, submitted a water connection request. It's a complete permit, well, pending the installation of a water line. But he submitted his application, so.
Okay, and that brings up the committee report. The Water Sewer Committee met. And we recommended that we we met, we met with Robert Clark, who is our preferred vendor, Utter, Utter Valley Engineering, Utter Creek Engineering. And the recommendation from the committee was twofold. One is that we authorize him to proceed for an estimate of cost, I believe, of twenty-five hundred dollars to develop the specs for the water line to be extended up post-road to take care of Mr. Stubbs and the neighbor across the road.
So Rob called me, I believe, yesterday and said he had talked to the neighbor and the the additional neighbor, and they said they're no longer interested in connecting.
Well, so it could be an easier project.
It could be.
So the first step is to have Robert Clark do the specification. So the first step is to have Robert Clark do the specifications for extending the water line. We were, and we were, the second is to go out to bid with the thought that this project would probably be in the range of $25,000. It would be to put a, only a two inch line. We talked about possibly extending a larger line. But we're also aware that, given the elevation of the houses there, there is a limitation to the water pressure. It would be okay for these, you know, two properties we're talking about. So we're looking for, I'm trying to find the actual minutes of the meeting, but we're looking, Water Sewer Committee is recommending that we authorize for $2,500, Robert Clark, to do the specs and then go out to bid for the extension of the water line up Post Road. So I would entertain a motion on that.
So move on.
Motion's made and seconded somewhere between Don and JP. Any discussion? I think Joe was in on the discussion. Don was. I was. If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. So that's the, the twofold.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. What else?
Do you want to handle his permit, water connection permit?
Okay.
It was not in the packet, it was on the desk.
Okay, so in anticipation.
Yes.
I have too many things around here.
There's a lot.
That we will extend the water line. There, Rob Stubbs has already applied. And, okay, here it is. Water connection request. His address is 493 Post Road Extension in Rutland. 450 gallons per day. It looks like three bedrooms at 150 gallons per day each. And, let's see, he has, he's paid, I would assume. $15 permit fee must accompany this application.
Did.
It's marked yes. What's your pleasure about the water connection request?
Move to approve.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the water connection request for Rob Stubbs. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay, next.
That's everything that I have that we haven't covered.
Okay, just run through quickly. Did that, we did.
Mike Rowe, Mike Rowe left the packet on there, yeah.
Okay. We talked about the Regional Planning Commission and people need to think, let's see. We have here, notice from the Town of Mendon, a notice of public hearing to, they, this is for December 6, 2021, at 6:30 for the purpose of hearing from interested persons to express their views on the following. A proposed Mendon Enhanced Energy Plan and a concurrent proposed amendment to the Energy Section of the Mendon Town Plan adopted on August 24, 2020. I'm assuming we're getting this because we're an adjoining
Yes.
municipality. It's signed by my boss, Theresa M. Corson's Mendon Planning Commission. She also happens to be chair or head of the Vermont Bar Association. Is there anything that they're proposing that would affect Rutland Town that you know of?
I took a quick look at it and it didn't really seem like anything that would affect us, no.
Okay, all right, so that.
But yes, we got that because they needed to send it to us.
They're an adjoining municipality, okay, thank you very much. We've received from Efficiency Vermont, a invitation to, looks like, it says, your lighting project, looks like to apply for LED.
Yeah, they have a lot of rebates, a lot of at time of purchase rebates for LED lighting. So we don't really need much, but if anybody thought of anything we needed for any of the buildings around, fixtures are at a, they're having this rebate right now on fixtures, so.
Really good deal, so.
We've done some good upgrades lately, so.
Circulate that among our department heads and see if anybody might be interested. I think you're right, we did quite a bit of upgrades when we had it before. On the desk is a water bottle refill station grant program. We just installed.
So we have the water fountain with the water. This is just a water bottle filling station. But that, I wasn't sure if, we have a couple of places that we might want to do that. Maybe the highway garage and maybe the pool.
Okay.
But we have, we did just get one here, but the only other place we don't have one at the moment, so.
Okay, would you make sure, please, that Mike Rowe and Byron get copies of this? Okay, just in case. And then we received a notice from Green Mountain Power. It is for, it was e-filed for their Center Rutland Hydroelectric Project Draft License Application. And of course, this is, this is the proposal that would allow them to continue using the falls, the hydropower from the falls. It all ties into our Pocket Park project, which is why they are interested in working with us because part of their licensing requires that they deal with public access to waterways. So I think this is for information only. Yep, looks it. So that's here, if anyone wishes to review it. Okay. So what else, anything else for Bill? Any Select Board member have anything else for Bill? Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Absolutely.
Next, John Paul Fagin, Town Health Officer. Do you have anything for us tonight, JP?
Nothing that needs reporting on, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Committee meetings and updates. We had a report and, and input on the Recreation Committee and we moved on Mike Rowe's recommendation, so that's taken care of. Anything else from Recreation that needs to come up tonight, Sharon?
Nope.
Okay. We've reported on the Water and Sewer Committee meeting. I think we covered it with the Post Road water line extension that we just voted on. Just as a reminder, we've got our project list. We might want to keep an eye on that as department heads are building their budgets and see how any of those items may fit in. Speaking of building budgets, Police Committee will be meeting on Monday at 9 o'clock to start working on our budget. The Planning Commission, if Barbara, if you could take a look at your budgetary needs for the coming year and let us know. Larry Delvanary, same with Transfer Station, if you haven't met with your committee. Okay, thank you very much. We need to set, JP and I need to set up a Fire Committee meeting to do the same. Building Committee also needs to meet to figure out what our budget will be for this place. And who am I missing? Highway. So Highway Committee should be getting with Byron as soon as possible to finalize the budget there. So just please do get those meetings in. We need to finalize the budget in December. And I don't want to be doing it, you know, Christmas week, please. Thank you. Okay. So down under new business, we've done item A. We've met our new police officer, item B. We visited with Randall Smathers. Item C, we've received the letters for First Constable Position. We've determined we're going to interview those folks next Tuesday. Regional Board of Commissioners and Transportation Council. We will put those off till next week. Bill Matson is not going to continue, so we need to find some folks there. We, item E, we have met with the Diamond Run Mall. We've gone over that. F, bored to meet with Transfer Station Manager Larry Delvanary regarding Transfer Station hours. Good evening, thank you for your patience.
Not a problem. It's not ours, it's eight hour, one hour.
Eight hour, okay.
Move to what I'd like to do with the Board of Commissioners on Wednesday.
Wait, wait, JP's trying to say something, so hold on, what have you got? JP?
Move to approve, move to approve.
Shouldn't we hear from them first?
No.
Well, I'm gonna listen to Larry for a few minutes and see what he has to propose.
Okay, I've already talked to JP and Joy on this. On Wednesdays, I'm open from 3 to 7. My last hour up there, hour and 15 minutes, and nobody's coming in.
And it's going to get worse because it's.
And it gets worse as it gets colder, yes. So what I'm proposing is open up at 2, go from 2 to 6.
Okay.
Both to accept.
Now JP's already moved to accept.
Second.
Sharon seconded the motion. Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion? So the proposal is to move the Transfer Station hours on Wednesday to 2 to 6. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 I will advertise that, yeah.
You got it.
And it'll start December 22nd.
Okay.
Okay.
And you'll get, let's see, maybe something so Bill can put it on the website.
Bill's going to put it on the website and I'm going to advertise up there. I've already talked to a lot of people about it. So.
Makes sense.
There's nobody up there, so.
Will there be change in the summer, do you think? Or that's been your experience all summer too?
Been my experience for over a year.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
It was time to do something about it.
Well, we just did.
Okay, Christmas falls on Saturday this year. And my proposal is that we open December 27th, which is a Monday. People have already had concerns with all the Christmas stuff there. No place to bring it, so.
Yep.
I'm proposing to open that day, December 27th, and that will be from noon to 6. And we will advertise that on the.
That's a Monday?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion on this? Any objection to this?
No, move to approve.
Did you just make a motion?
To approve.
Okay, motion to approve. Second, all in favor of opening the Transfer Station Monday, the 27th of December, from noon to 6, please say aye.
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 Aye, you got it.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Any questions?
Question, what about the following weekend for New Year's?
Oh.
Do you want to be open New Year's Day or not?
No, New Year's, we're going to open on New Year's Day.
Okay.
At the Saturday. We don't go out the night before.
Celebrate with garbage. Way to go, Del.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so it takes care of F. Any other new business? I have two items. One is what I've circulated earlier today. We are all aware of the Veterans Memorial out in front of Town Hall and the fact that the lettering has eroded over the years so that the names of the veterans who served in the two world wars is getting harder and harder to read. We talked about doing something about it. And I decided with Veterans Day coming up on Thursday, two days from now, this would be a good time. So I circulated among the Select Board a charge for a memorial committee and committee members who have expressed willingness to serve on this committee. And so I would, let me, let me tell you, you've, you've seen the proposal, committee members. I am proposing our Dr. David Charnock as Chair. He is a veteran of the United States Navy. Sharon Russell on the Select Board. She, it works with veterans all the time in the Open Door Mission. Don Chaffee, Select Board. He is U.S. Army and a Vietnam Vet. Ed Squira, U.S. Army and another Vietnam Vet. Marty and Mary Wasserman, who have for quite a number of years now kept up the memorial garden, the plantings around here. Marty's also on our emergency management guy. Dick Bailey, who is a U.S. Air Force veteran. Jim Ashcroft, who is a U.S. Coast Guard veteran. Jim Hall, U.S. Army veteran. And Chris Kiefer Chaffee, former Select Board member. And she's had an ongoing interest in this project for a number of years since she served on the board. And I will tell you that everyone I talked with on this list was, immediately said yes. So this is something, I'm very pleased that people want to move forward with this. And I would entertain a motion to approve the committee and its charge.
So move.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second emotion.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion carries, thank you. And I'll work with Bill on the contact information so we can move forward and get those people lined up to help us out there. Okay, the other new business, because Byron Hathaway is resigning as of the end of this year, not only as Road Commissioner, but also as Tree Warden. I've asked Fred Nicholson if he would be interested in resuming that position. And he said yes, he's out in the hallway right now. So I would entertain a motion to reappoint Fred Nicholson at the end of this year to carry forward. And I think it's until after town meeting when we reorganize. Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor of Fred Nicholson as Tree Warden for the, until town meeting, please say aye.
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 Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Under old business, I think we have covered, we've, we've corresponded with the Department of Children and Families. That's different, okay. All right, so I don't think there's. Oh, the contract, I haven't discussed it with Kevin Brown lately, so I need to get with him. We, you'll remember, we asked him to spend not more than one hour of lawyer time telling us whether it was worth going into that contract, so. Any other business to be brought up, old or new?
Mary, I have just an observation.
Yep.
We, we, I think it was Chris Howland came in about some open burning and something going on. Excuse me. And Bill provided us, or at least I saw a copy of a open burning ordinance, probably dated around 2015. And I noticed that what, if that's what's on the website or the town, wherever it is, it is an unsigned ordinance. So I don't know if that ever was adopted. The other thing that bothers me about that is I was never contacted or asked for any input or anything about this type of ordinance. So it makes it difficult if we're not all on the same page. So I think we need to do a little research, see if that was ever actually adopted. I know there were some things that the board did and they never got recorded. I know as Fire Chief, we did some stuff about having an ordinance for alarms and, and people were supposed to do that. And it came about that, well, we didn't do that right and they redid it. And I know for a fact that what was redone was exactly what we did the first time. So I'm a little concerned that, that there's maybe a little misinformation out there. And I think that's just, needs to be looked at and make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, good, thank you, Joe. That's a reminder, if you could, Bill, put that, and Chris is going to speak, but while it's fresh in my mind, would you put that on the agenda for the Fire Committee to look into those? It is on the agenda, okay, Chris Howland.
Okay, the website, the website and that ordinance, whether approved or not, are, don't agree.
Okay.
So Bill, you, I just noticed.
Okay. Website does not agree with the ordinance. Fair enough, thank you. Okay, appreciate that. Our Town Delinquent Tax Collector is here, anything we need to cover? Okay. Anything else from any member of the Select Board? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Good night.